Okay. You may begin. Call the meeting to order, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First item, any changes or additions to the agenda? Hearing none?
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, first item of business, special presentations and appearances. Mr. Wilks, I understand you have a few remarks you'd like to share with us?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I think the cameraman would like you to use the microphone and the pootie.
I was hoping to dodge it, but that's fine.
Yeah, there's no... It's a wide angle.
Thank you. Okay. Hi, I'm Clark Wilks, President of the Board of Directors of Lake of the Woods Association. And on behalf of the Lake of the Woods Board of Directors, I welcome the Orange County Board of Supervisors. We look forward to hosting your meeting each year here at the clubhouse. You have arrived at an exciting time in Loa's long history. We are in the midst of constructing a new clubhouse, pool, and fitness center complex to replace the original 1960s facilities. You may have seen the construction fencing on your way in. I'd like to take a moment to highlight some of the issues of concern from the community. GWAP, you all are very familiar with that. In our view, GWAP must take into consideration the concerns of Loa, including the setback in design standards, buffering from noise and lights, the business and commercial offerings hopefully will appeal to our residents. Transportation, the transportation network should keep our front gate at Route 3 from becoming more congested. The relocation of Route 20 near Route 3 intersection, we hope will take into consideration the roadway and traffic, that roadway and traffic will be closer to our Section 6 and 13 residents. We believe a sound wall is called for, and we ask that you work to ensure that any plans include that aspect. We have formed an ad hoc committee on fencing to look at buffering needs along the Route 3 corridor, and we will forward their final report to you. FEMA flood maps, continued partnership with Orange County on the new FEMA flood maps is essential. Pending map changes will significantly affect lake life. We anticipate FEMA will accept the more detailed lake mapping from Loa's engineer. However, if FEMA does not, we would hope that Orange County will weigh in on our behalf with federal officials and FEMA, and perhaps our congressional delegation. Stormwater runoff. Stormwater runoff has been a high priority issue following summer severe storms. We appreciate the offer of Supervisor Jim Crozier to speak to the Rappahannock Rapid End Regional Commission about our concerns with flooding. Any advice and assistance the county can give our association and our individual members is greatly appreciated. Loa has also reached out to the county schools to ensure that Locust Grove Middle School's stormwater management structures are operating correctly and being well maintained since the school is our upstream neighbor on flat run. RSA, the November 2 sewer force main break resulted in a spill of 18,000 gallons of sewage into the main lake. It has Loa members understandably upset, and we would appreciate it if RSA and Lee and Jim, your assistance in updating the mapping of the location of the forced mains in and around the lake and pre-planning to coordinate future incidents of this nature. Loa would appreciate it if it's possible to have a hazardous waste disposal day here at the lake. It would be very convenient for members and nearby neighborhoods, and we would be happy to open our gates to allow county residents to come in and participate as we did for the prescription drug takeback day in October. On the broadband matter, we're following with interest the installation of the broadband that will bring new connectivity as close as our back gate. We look forward to partnering with the county to improve broadband offerings to individual Loa members in the near future. We have two capital projects that require county review and inspection. I had to make this real big so I could see it, just want y'all to know that. The first is the 14th Pond Forbay Construction Project on our golf course. This important lakes management project is currently being bid, and we would appreciate the county's cooperation and help in ensuring that this project to improve stormwater and lake health is completed in a timely manner. The second project is the clubhouse area recreation complex. Timely county inspections will ensure that this center will open on time in summer of 2019. Thank you all for your attention. Thank you all for coming up here. We're happy to see you, and we hope the meeting goes well.
Thank you, Mr. Wilks. I made some notes. Some of these items that we might even touch on tonight a little bit, others we will certainly track and keep an eye on, see what's coming together. I assume Phil is involved in some of these at least, and so there's... Okay, thank you. All right, consent agenda. Second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yes. No new business on the agenda? Old business, amendment to the, speaking of old business, amendment to the Town of Orange, Mason Right-of-Way Agreement for five optics. Mr. Davis, your name is by this one.
Yes, sir, and that will continue to be the theme of the night on a number of these items. Gentlemen, I bring to you tonight an amendment to the Town of Orange, Mason Right-of-Way Use Agreement for the five optic network as it is deployed in within the town's corporate limits. You approved this agreement once before on October 23rd. Subsequent to that action, the town, the school board, which is a partner in this project, approved it as well. Supervisors Goodwin and Johnson represented the board and worked with their counterparts on town council to develop this agreement over a number of months this past spring and through the summer. I presented this work with Dr. Sneed with the school board, they approved it on October 29th. Following these two governing bodies' approval, the Town of Orange again amended Section 8.3 and added an Appendix B. Essentially what was amended was, as you know, insurance coverage for the contractor, insurance coverage for the county, and the insurance coverage for the school board were very important matters for the town. They felt it was necessary in order to have sufficient coverage that the county post a performance surety, a cash performance surety in the amount of $50,000 to cover any deficiencies that they might find with the project during a five-year period following construction. We worked through the details of this, and essentially what we're going to do is post a cash performance surety with a local attorney. Right now, I'm having conversations with Mr. Henry Carter, who handles the county's delinquent tax collections and handles escrows as a matter of course for us. We will post this $50,000 with Mr. Carter. The agreement spells out the process by which claims may be made against this $50,000 by the town. But I would also add that we, there's a 30-day notice provision in this, I guess, claim process that gives us the ability to put, be put on notice by any claims from the town regarding this asset that is there to benefit the town, the schools, and the county, and we have an ability to cure that claim. And so it's probably doubtful, at least in my opinion, that the town would ever see cash drawdowns from this. We will have fixed whatever problems they identify. After the five-year period concludes or sunsets, the $50,000 would be returned, and there'll be an interest bearing account to the county's general fund. Following that, the town felt it was important that they still have a vehicle to make claims against the county for deficiencies with the project or problems that might impact the town's right-of-way. And the appendix anticipates that they can pursue claims against the Board of Supervisors on behalf of the county, against the county through the Board of Supervisors according to the state code provision. I worked with the county attorney to clear up some of this language to make it sure it comported with existing legislative authorities. So with all of that said, gentlemen, I've kept you abrised as we move through. One of the challenges that we had is that this document had ostensibly been approved by everybody, was again amended. We got a contractor bearing down on the corporate limits as we speak, and the idea of keeping momentum going is that the chairman signed this with the understanding that this would be brought to you all tonight for ratification of his signature. We've delivered all the executed copies to the town as of yesterday. The school board has, and Chairman, Chair Page has signed it on behalf of the school board. I'll stop right there if there are any questions, but the idea is everything's been approved, everything's been assigned. I think we're finally putting this thing to rest, and tonight's action is just to ratify the chair's signature.
You might for the, some of the members in the audience, explain why we needed this in the first place.
How about if, Mr. Goodwin or Mr. Frame, if you want to...
Well, the overarching issue is most of the fiber is being placed in VDOT right-of-ways. Streets in the Town of Orange are not VDOT, they belong to the Town of Orange. That's the simplest way to start the conversation. You guys can...
And we need to get an easement from them to put county fiber optics through the town.
Correct.
And it has been a long drawn-out discussion.
Yeah, it started off going down Madison Road, which did not be done because they're not even sure what's under the road. So we moved over to Delvee, which actually worth it to be a better road. And that way we can direct everything to the schools in a more, or in a better fashion. And in doing so, we've also set up so that their junction boxes are properly located so that everything can be done, so that the town will be able to access this once we're all done. It's been an interesting process.
And it's important to the project because I guess there are three, and if you possibly one could argue four, school facilities in the town. And so it's not as if we could just say we're moving on to somewhere, some other place.
No, and also the police department.
And the town police department in that area. Local government gets really local.
The reason we needed the agreement was, as Jim pointed out, within the Town of Orange, the town controls the right-of-way as opposed to Alton County where they state Virginia, through the Virginia Department of Transportation controls the right-of-way. So that's the short answer of why we need to do this. Another answer, seeing one wondering why it took us 15 minutes to get the state's approval and six months to get the Town of Orange's approval, the best answer there would be, I have no idea. Perhaps you might want to ask the town manager, perhaps who can explain it.
We also had a recent notice that the, we've got an extension on the time to install the fiber optics. The contract, when we got, when we got the grant, we needed an extension because they gave it at the end of the year, and then they didn't give us the money for quite a while in the next year. And getting a second extension seemed to be beyond the normal regulatory process, so we had to work pretty hard to get that. The extension now goes to June of 2019, so we should be able to finish all that work by then.
That's later on the agenda. I said that's later on the agenda.
Oh, that's the other one? Okay. Okay, any, any questions or discussions about the right-of-way use agreement?
Motion to approve.
Second.
You're ratifying. You're ratifying signatures. You have your motion?
Yes.
Okay. And your second?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Let's do a roll call.
Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Coffee room.
God, it's for a town like them first.
Thank you, members of board. I appreciate we, I think, got that. We'll speak on a status report on the project, but this clears the last paperwork kind of thing, and they can get out there and start putting glass in the ground, so.
Good. And I, special thanks to Teal and Mark for working through this with the town, town council, staff, and others. That was, that was an interesting set of conversations that went on. But we got there.
We got it. We're done.
Okay. Department Director, Constable, all for reports. Tourism update on the marketing trip. Yes, Lori, tell us about your trip to the Big Apple, I guess, huh?
Um, hello, everyone. I'm Lori Landis-Carter. I'm the tourism manager for Orange County, Virginia. I am also a resident here. You might have seen me around here and there. I wanted to report, just as my memo has stated, I also left a little leave behind there with you with an article we'll get to in a minute, but I wanted to report the good news. It was a very successful trip. I was selected through an application process by the Virginia Tourism Corporation to be able to go and represent Orange County in New York City for a very special media blitz, which means we were, we had an opportunity as localities from the state of Virginia along with Virginia Tourism Corporation to have an opportunity to get in front of a number of very important publications, writers, freelancers, and media outlets to try to pitch and sell our localities to these writers, and to potentially have earned media about our localities. We were chosen out of the entire state. There were only nine localities that were chosen to go on this media trip. So first of all, I was very, very happy to be able to have that honor. It was a great trip. We met with nine publishers. Some of those were Sherman's Travel, Thrillist, which is a pretty popular website that's getting a lot of traction, Forbes Magazine, which some of you might be familiar with, Travel and Leisure, which is owned by the Meredith PR Group, Southern Living, which we all pretty much are familiar with, Torta Lus, which is an influencer that has a good bit of following and her own website, Martha Stewart Living, which we all seem to be familiar with, Budget Travel, and there was a freelance writer also. Each of these appointments, we were able to have time. There was only four of the localities in each appointment, so it gave us some really personal one-on-one time. With that, we had an opportunity to tell them about who we were and why Orange County is amazing and why they need to come and cover us and tell the world about us. So it went really well. I had some great connections because these types of connections, you can't cold-call these people. These people don't answer the phone. The only way to get ahold of them typically is through emails, and you have to have a name. So we've gotten in with a golden ticket to a lot of these publications, and now they know who we are and we're on their radar. So on top of that, I've been able to follow up since I've been home and reconnect with a lot of them, and actually have sent a lead out that actually got taken just this past week, and that is the article you see on your desk that I provided you. Southern Living, which was a digital, southernliving.com is a digital writer. She loves historic real estate, and so I had noted that, and we have an historical estate in Orange, the Town of Orange proper, that is for sale, an incredible property that's on the historic registry, national and state. And so I threw it out at her and see, to see if it would stick, and she decided to cover it. So we got national, a national article on southernliving.com regarding Williston, the estate, along with talking about us as a county. So, and that's what I've given you guys, is the representation of that article. It looks a little better digitally. I also did a little snapshot of where, I shared it on our Facebook page, so if you're interested, you can take a look at it. They did a great spread on it, did a ton of pictures, and it looks like it's been getting a lot of feedback and a lot of good, kind of good, good feedback from my Facebook page. People are tending to like it. So overall, I think a really, really successful trip, and we've got a lot of great potential opportunities to get some, some more of that earned media that works so much better than paid media nowadays. So thank you guys for helping me make that happen by allowing me to have the funding available to do that trip, and I'm looking forward to hopefully being able to do a Washington, DC, Atlanta, or Charlotte media blitz, which are also going to be happening in the year 2019, and we hope to be selected to go with one of those, with one of those trips for another media blitz in those areas. You guys have any questions? Yes, sir.
Chairman, members of board, while you're up here...
Yeah, I didn't want to divert, but...
Yeah, go ahead and shift gears to the short-term rental.
Um, I actually, as you guys have those in front of you, they are hot off the press. We have developed a short-term rental brochure. As some of you have heard, we have a code that has gone into compliance for a registry for our short-term rentals, or AKA Airbnbs, anything under 30 days. We've developed an informational brochure. I actually left a good bit of them up at the Holcomb Building. We know that Lake of the Woods, along with other parts of the county, has a number of these. It has gone into effect on November 1st that we've developed a registry. So it's a very simple process to register and get with the Commissioner of Revenue and to be able to get on the radar of the county so we can then start moving forward with them in a legitimate matter and have them follow the proper procedures in being able to have their short-term rental. So these brochures will be available at the Holcomb Building, they'll be available at the Commissioner's Office along with Town of Orange, and anywhere else I can actually get them in the hands of the public. I will also have a electronic PDF version that I'm going to be sharing with some of the administrators at the Holcomb Building who kind of help handle some of this short-term rental stuff, so they can actually share with those who need or have questions about how to go about getting themselves registered, and it will have direct links. It'll be very easy. It's a very easy process, and I wanted just to share also, to help us, please, get the word out, we do have a process now. It is a specific code. It's very easy, and it's not, it's not difficult to understand, and it's very easy to become registered, and we would like everybody to, to get in the registry and, and start taking care of business legitimately with us in the county. So that'll be available through the Holcomb Building also, through one of the ladies downstairs that I shared that with today, and she will have it available in electronic format if we need it. I'm hoping we can get it on the website for LOWA and maybe have it there where it can also be accessible, so it's very easy for our residents and our owners here that are operating short-term rentals to be able to get that information. And so that's our brochure that will be handed out in the public. Any questions about that, guys?
We don't have much.
Yeah, we hope to have you all as ambassadors to help us spread the word and to help this process begin, and we can start getting these guys on the radar.
Lori, while you're there, you or we can make a few comments about this. It's, some people thought it was a new tax. It's not a new tax. People who have their properties leased through Realtors do not have to register because the Realtors themselves with their own code of ethics and things are required to register. So there, it's, there are any number of features that you need to plow through to really understand how this affects you. This is, this will be administered by the Commissioner of Revenue, and there's, there's no cost to register, no fee or anything associated with it. It's really just an attempt to identify those properties that are being offered for short-term rental and inform the owners of those properties and those that are managing those properties of their obligation to now register. There is a tax, 2% tax that is, that shouldn't have been paid all along.
Right.
If you have questions, the Commissioner of Revenue is going to administer this program. Are you handling any of the inquiries, Lori?
Well, I've got my email on there too, on the brochure, along with the zoning is on there in case there's zoning questions of whether their, their neighborhood is allowed to even have a short-term rental. Obviously, we're speaking about Lake of the Woods, and we, we have that kind of within so far our association, our rules and regulations that they're allowed to operate. It's also going to, it's digital, so you're able to either drop down the registration form digitally and fill it out, or you can print it out and send it in. It's, it's going to, we're trying to make it as easy as possible. Very easy steps, not a whole lot of steps.
Lori, I do have one suggestion. I'm just, I'm not going to mention anything this evening, but you may want to go ahead and put the fire and rescue contact information to the county as well as the individual fire companies, reach for to the county, so that people that are doing these rentals, if they have questions, they can contact them and find out the proper information for the fire safety.
Yeah, for the part of their planning for emergency planning. Okay, that's easy. We can do that. So yeah, we look for your help and your help in helping us be ambassadors and getting the word out, because it's kind of hard, because some of our property owners might not be local, as we well know. So if we can kind of help share that information, if you've got neighbors that you know of that are operating these, any way we can have help to help get the information to them so they know what's going on would be greatly appreciated.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item, first quarter report.
Yes, sir.
Finance. Ms. Bradley isn't here this evening, I think.
Yeah, I'm going to attempt to pinch-hit at this, so I will scribe, or Alison scribe any questions, because I don't know if I'll have the answers on this. Gentlemen, we've distributed to you our first quarter report, our Q1 report for our fiscal year 2018-19. The county's fiscal year, as you all know, is on a July-June fiscal cycle, so these are reports on revenues and expenditures for the first quarter. There'll be a lot of numbers. This report is on our website if people want to delve into it further. Our year-to-year comparison reflects the first quarter in which revenues were higher by 14.12%, expenditures decreased by 5.9%. The property tax revenues at only 2.4% of budget estimates reflected an increase over the prior year of 23.117, or $187,000 approximately. This increase is primarily due to an increase in the first half billing of the estate for 2018. Net sales tax for September increased by 15% over prior years because sales tax revenue is remitted to the county two months after it is collected by the merchant. The first quarter report only includes one month's receipt. Utility tax and meals tax collections also increased over the prior year. I might note, Chairman, members of board, the Supreme Court rendered a decision in the Wayfair case about the online sales tax collection by onetime Realtor, Realtor, real estate, excuse me, real...
Retail.
Retail. Thank you. Thank you. Let me try that again sometime. And what that really said was that if you have more than 200 transactions in a state, you are then obligated to collect the state's sales tax. In Orange County, we get 1% of the state's sales tax. So the idea is that we will, in Amazon and all the large online are now collecting state sales tax, so we should start seeing some increases in our sales tax revenue because of the, of the Wayfair decision. So we'll, we'll be monitoring that going forward. The, the general cash balances have begun to decrease as previously appropriated excess general fund revenues are used for scheduled debt service payments and capital projects. Despite the decline in general cash balance, the rise in interest rates has been enough to show an increase in interest revenue. With regard to expenditure, general fund expenditures reflect a total decrease of $728,574, which is about 6% below the prior year's first quarter, year-on-year. At the end of the first quarter, total general fund expenditures were at 19.4% of budgeted appropriations compared to 21.1% for the prior year. The largest area of decrease was in correction and detention. However, this is purely a matter of timing differences between the years, the second-quarterly contribution payments to the Central Virginia Regional Jail and the Rappahannock Judicial Detention Center. The legislative category reflects a decrease in year-on-year expenditures mainly due to revenue refunds. The decrease in law enforcement category reflects the consolidation of the dispatch centers. That was back in January, February, when we consolidated the Sheriff's Dispatch Center with our 911 Dispatch Center into a consolidated emergency communications center that is operating as of today. Gentlemen, as you know, we've been going through our Children's Services Act funds pretty quickly. uh, funds, uh, pretty quickly. Uh, the Department on Youth, CSA, Children's Services Act increased by 50.99% and is almost entirely reflected in CSA pooled expenses, which increased by $151,950 through the end of the first quarter. Foster care expenses more than doubled, an increase of $54,687 when compared to FY18. And special education, IEP, private day placement costs increased by $74,675. Residential congregate care increased by $8,724 and community-based services by $13,254. Uh, we did have an increased contribution to Germana Community College to support funding for quality enhancement plan, uh, to integrate problem solving to the curriculum, which is being added as a workforce development initiative. With regard to school funds, as of September 30th, 2018, the school operating fund had used 13.1% of the local funds budget for the year compared to 14.6 at the same time last year. Uh, the non-departmental category detail reflects a remaining appropriation of $17,831,554 in local funds for school operations. If I recall, the total budget appropriation per year was around $21 million. Local funds for capital and debt service are being transferred in 12 equally monthly installments. Gentlemen, as you remember, we appropriate the schools on a monthly basis. Social services, uh, revenues for FY19 were $762,989, 20%, 20.6% of budgeted, uh, estimates. The county's debt service fund is normally funded solely by transfers from the general fund. However, this pattern of our capital and financing claim related to the 2016 bond issue, excess general fund reserves were appropriated totaling $934,168 for FY18 and $160,14 for FY19. Most bond obligations that are resulting from this debt issue of 2016 are, uh, they require two interest payments and one principal payment during the year, with many of these due in December and June. So that's why there's pretty much an up and down in that line. Uh, our capital, our, our capital bond projects, uh, reflects the budget. Uh, things seem to be tracking according to plan. And we've encumbered, encumbered now, uh, about $7.2 million, uh, for outstanding purchase orders and the remaining appropriations will carry forward into future years until the projects are complete. Our airport fund, uh, is tracking as, as expected. Our landfill fund, uh, likewise, and that our cash balances and other, uh, miscellaneous funds, uh, the first three months of this fiscal year have decreased by about $1.2 million. Uh, this was because of planned use of excess general fund revenues. Um, and one other thing, and I'll, I'll read this, uh, Glenda had included in this. Report also includes a quarterly summary on the usage of the Rappahannock Juvenile Center and its effect on Orange County's potential contribution. At September 30th, 2018, Orange had used a larger portion of the facility's childcare days than originally projected budgeted. Orange used 11.89% of the total childcare days rather than the budget estimate of 5.61. So that's essentially, we have more, uh, children, juveniles staying at the detention facility for the first quarter than we had. Twice as many there than childcare days than we had budgeted. Uh, this is, uh, a function of juvenile crime and the sentence is determined by the court. These are either pre-trial or post-trial, uh, juveniles. It's difficult to predict how this trend runs. As you know, it's, it, it, it varies, it's very difficult for us to project trends with the utilization of, of childcare days at the juvenile detention facility. I think that concludes the report, gentlemen. If there are any questions, I'll be glad to pass those on to, to Glenda.
Couple of comments, uh, really observations, I guess. Unlike budgeting at all level of government, we have categories that, uh, are in essence budgeted for us by the courts, by federal law, by state law, uh, and the like. And you heard a couple of those and, uh, they're, while they're not wildly out of control at this point, uh, they, they fluctuate severely and it's a, it's a challenge to try to budget for them. Many times we have to, during the course of the year, go find additional money to cover, especially social services and child protective services, those kind of programs that are.
They don't fluctuate up and down. They only seem to fluctuate.
That's true. They fluctuate, but it's always a bump and, uh, you know, among other challenges. I, I say that because I want to go back to the very first thing that Brian said, you know, uh, our, our revenues are, were up for the quarter and expenses were down. You don't hear that too often when it comes to government, uh, budgeting, but, uh, we're, we work really hard on, on our budget. Any of you know what a high C sounds like on a bench or that, that's about how tight our budget is. You know, the slightest little perturbation gives us trouble, but, uh, we do work very hard on the budgeting process and, uh, as you can see from this, track it in a lot of detail. You don't have this in front of you, but it's pages and pages of computer printout here. So we take it seriously and try to be a good steward of some of your money.
Which you can access online if you really get interested.
Yeah, if, if you have a, well, tomorrow's going to be a terrible day. I imagine, I would recommend that you get a nice glass of wine and build a flyer and, and, and stare at this until you're asleep.
No need to be cool.
I'm, I'm a little bit, but that's an all sorts of city. We're, we're very proud of where we are financially and, and work well as a group to, uh, manage our way through the maze. It's a, it's an important time. At some point you have to joke about it a little bit.
It's trying. Can't all be serious.
Can't all be serious. Okay. Uh, broadband project.
It's, sir.
Stephanie here tonight?
No, sir. I want to pitch it for her as well. Uh, our Director of Management Services, Stephanie Straub, has provided a brief report. As Mr. Frame said, um, we were granted a grant to, with the schools to build the fiber, 33 miles of fiber in the county servicing all the schools, um, generally going 20, Route 20 and Route 15. This is a 288 strand cable, fiber optics cable. Uh, we were granted the grant at 12, around 12 noon on June 30th of 17 and technically had to midnight of June 30th, 2017 to build it. The USAC, the federal agency granting it, gave us a year's extension. Uh, contractor was procured, everything was lined up, and then through USAC's, uh, problems were, uh, the contractor was unable to get paid the grant funds. That was about a five-month process to unwork that put us behind. So by the, by the early spring, late winter, things were back on track. Uh, we were advised to file for a second extension, uh, by USAC in order to get another year onto our grant. Uh, subsequent to that advice and guidance, USAC advised that they had no authority to grant a second year's extension. Uh, and so we, we filed our paperwork, but we also, uh, through Congressman Brad's office, um, and some work that Mr. Johnson had done, uh, we had gotten a contact, um, at the Federal Communications Commission. We preemptively filed our appeal of USAC's coming denial on the extension because they would deny our extension request because they had no authority for two extension requests. That denial, they used the full 90 days from the time we applied. So about three weeks ago, I guess it was, um, uh, three, four weeks ago, the denial came out and the FCC immediately, within about a week, granted our appeal. Uh, so everything's straight. We're on straight and narrow and, and, and everything's going forward. And as I said earlier, the contractor is going to be, has done everything in the eastern end of the county, uh, including a conduit across the road to the utility lot that the Lake, uh, Lower, the association has. It has also gone all the way to Orange and then we're going down to Gordonsville to finish the, uh, finishing out the project. And it's done by probably the third quarter of our fiscal year, if you can explain.
Yeah, the latest estimate from Stephanie, she sent an email out this afternoon, some dates, uh, and it, uh, looks like the last phase will be, uh, basically Route 15 from Town of Orange down to Gordonsville and that's scheduled for completion, uh, the, the fiber portion of that, uh, in March of next year. So we should have, barring other, I'm not even going to say.
Thank you, Mr. White.
You get my drift. It, it's been an interesting process, but, but the, the contractor, I will say, has been diligent and is, is performing well and working and has some of the tougher, uh, parts of the job done.
Make sure we didn't, he didn't have to slow down.
Right.
He actually, uh, granted appropriated some money to be able to use to provide an interim so he could keep working.
Right.
Well, it's, uh, it's been an interesting process. I just, um, navigating federal government bureaucracy is always enjoyable. You know, this last stage here, we had to, we had to wait to be turned down before we could be approved. So that was fun, uh, but we got there and we did have some help. We had some help from the White House Office of the Governmental Affairs. We had help from, uh, people within the FCC and Congressman Brad helped, and I think Senator Kane, uh, also was, was some help. Uh, so, yeah, we, we got it done.
It was one of those cases.
We, we being the, everybody.
Yeah.
Lot, lot of different moving parts.
The, the, there was a compelling case to be made, uh, in terms of the facts. The challenge was to get those facts in front of someone that can say yes. You know, that, that's a search that if you've ever dealt with the federal government or anything, finding that person that can say yes, is, is the challenge. Thanks to the help of lots of people, they finally found somebody that had one of these in their hand. They actually chastised USAC a little bit, the FCC did, by saying, "You shall go in and adjust all the schedules and get your act together and do it right." I'm paraphrasing only, so. It was a little bit refreshing, shortly, but a little bit refreshing. It is a, it is an important project. Uh, some, uh, Mr. Old Chief mentioned broadband in your opening remarks. I'll come back to that just for a second. Uh, the, the current thinking is there will be a, a main line, uh, running past your back gate, not exactly which side of the road and, and these kind of things. That has to be worked out yet, but, uh, it, it, it will be big enough and available for Lake of the Woods to, uh, develop their own plan for how to, how to use that. And I encourage you to do that. I know you're having conversations and have a working group, uh, but, uh, that, having access to that, to, to try to put it into context, it, it, once, once our project is, is finished and, and is, uh, is tapped into the Equinex facility in Culpeper, which really is one of the main, uh, points of access to the internet for the world. It is a, it is a major hub where almost everything going north and south now passes through. Uh, and we will have direct access to Equinex through the fiber system in Orange County. And so if you can get on that train, uh, you have access to all sorts of capabilities, pricing is better and all these things. And so I encourage you to continue to take a look at that. We're a little bit behind the curve because of some things you've heard here, but, uh, I, I feel pretty confident that, uh, you know, it's going to happen very soon now. So take advantage of it. Okay, anything else on broadband or you have to say? Uh, looking at Stephanie's report, uh. I think we covered it. Okay. All right, county attorney's report.
No report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. County administrator's report, it sounds a little odd to you.
Yes, sir.
Come to that now that you have the stage for it.
I have two, two items for you, uh, one is for information, the other was, uh, for some action. As you all know, you held a biennial retreat, uh, every two years, obviously, and your last one was on April 21st. And what you did was you reviewed your strategic priorities for the next two fiscal years. So this is over two fiscal cycles. Uh, the board has been well-served by strategically looking out two fiscal years, um, for its priorities that then becomes, uh, you all's benchmarks, my report card on implementing your benchmarks to achieve the, the vision and the goals that you have for the county. You have, uh, you decided to continue with the two goals. The first one is vibrant economic development and the second is an effective reflective government. You also agreed at the retreat that high-quality citizen services align with available resources is a goal which transcends all departments and functions. As in the past, uh, years, uh, over the course of the fiscal year, I will provide you a quarterly report that will annotate where it has gone on in furtherance, uh, of each one of these goals and, uh, or things that we have not been able to accomplish. Um, uh, this will be, my report will be available on the internet, um, on our website, but, uh, under vibrant economic development, uh, the Orange County Broadband Authority will continue development, implementation, and management of an open access fiber optics network and rural broadband initiative with the overarching goal of making high-speed broadband affordable and available to all residents and businesses. And there's a number of items that have gone, uh, this past quarter to implement that. Your second priority is to collaborate on economic development with the towns of Gordonsville and Orange, Orange. Some of that is more formalized, others are, uh, joint economic development projects that Phil Gier, as the Director of Economic Development, is undertaking as well as with Lori, who tours, and since that's another, uh, component to our economic development program. Your third priority is continued development, implement, uh, to develop, implement, manage the Germana Wilderness Area Plan. Uh, annual work program include infrastructure planning, water, wastewater transportation, telecommunications, land use and development, economic development, and historical and cultural assets. And there've been a number of things, primarily the Route 3 arterial preservation plan that there was a town hall, uh, this past, I think it was September, uh, we had that over at Locust Grove Middle School. Uh, the final report, uh, should be coming forth from, uh, the Department of Transportation Consultant. Uh, the plan is that that, that arterial management plan will be, uh, presented to the Planning Commission, will then, uh, make a recommendation to the board as adopting as part of the county's comprehensive plan, just like the Germana Wilderness Area Plan. Uh, under effective reflective government, uh, gentlemen, uh, first priority is to develop, implement, and manage strategies for the digital citizen, anytime, anywhere, all citizens. This is a concept that, uh, we would bring to, uh, areas of access, transactions, information, engagement, and security. Uh, getting broadband deployed, uh, everywhere is kind of the first part of this before we can effectively implement the, the other parts of it. Uh, but I would say cybersecurity is a, is a high, uh, on our list. We actually had, uh, we're fortunate, we had a vulnerability assessment conducted by the 91st Cy- Cyber Brigade of Virginia National Guard, um, during this last quarter that certainly said, uh, at the end of the day that we have, uh, we, we have some vulnerabilities, but again, we're a small government, um, with, with some, uh, limited resources. But they graded us a little bit, uh, right about the bell curve, fair, a little bit above fair. So I felt, and Larry, uh, comment, our IT director, felt real good about where we were. Uh, last two is enhance the overall fiscal planning and budgeting process for general government, Orange County Public Schools, constitutional officers, outside agencies. Uh, we are on the front end of next year's budgets, always, always budget season. And the last priority is make targeted technical corrections to specific ordinances regarding land use, development, and subdivision. And there's no reported activity the last quarter. Uh, that's all I had for you on that item, Chairman members of board.
Okay. Any questions? Legislative priorities for 2019.
Yes, sir. Uh, you began your process of updating your legislative, uh, priorities for 2019. This would be corresponding with the 2019 General Assembly. Uh, you began this work in August. Uh, on October 9th, Mr. Eldon James, who with the Rappahannock, Rapid and Regional Legislative Liaison, presented the region's proposed legislative priorities. You took this all under advisement. You gave me some guidance. Uh, in your agenda package is the draft, the final draft of the board's legislative priorities, and it certainly reflects all the edits made to the board to date. It is ready for adoption tonight a- at this meeting. And once you adopt it, just as in past practice, I will distribute this to Senator Reeves and Delegate Freedus and their respective staff, uh, being able to present, uh, the board's priorities, uh, for the upcoming General Assembly, uh, legislative session. The only other thing I would add, uh, Virginia Association of Counties had their annual meeting, uh, this past week. Uh, a lot of what the Association of Counties does is legislative advocacy. Uh, I did note with interesting, uh, Mr. Frame was aware of this, as you all know, we're going through a corporate boundary, uh, analysis with Spotsylvania County to straighten that, to make the line accurate. Right now it looks like a straight line and biceps a lot of properties.
Which we don't know where the origin of either end of that line is.
And the, the informal agreement between both municipalities since the seventies is is 51% or more. percent or more, that it's taxed, and services and everything are provided by that locality. So, there's some properties that have forty-nine percent in Orange, but fifty-one in Spotsia, vice versa. We're now going to include all those that are fifty-one more are going to be in Spotsia and Orange. What we're using is geographic information system, GIS, Digital Spatial Database, to do that, very, very cost-effective, because the alternative is actually to hire surveyors to go out into the field for, I don't know how, thirty, forty miles, maybe thirty miles.
There's a reason that line has never been surveyed in two-hundred years.
So, we're working through that, and that more information to come, and I think we're getting close to the end, where we have something to present to you, gentlemen. But I was pleased to hear that the Association of Counties, we had to get added to that legislation for Spotsia, and Spotsylvania and Orange to actually do this, because we're Dillon rural state, and the state has to give us permission to do things. The Association of Counties is asking that this be given to all localities without having to ask special permission, because it just makes common sense.
One of the motivations for this, and it didn't affect us, but there were jurisdictions within the state that they were paying taxes, sending their kids to one school, and they found out they couldn't vote in that same district, they had to vote in others. So, trying to correlate and get these matched, so people know where they're supposed to vote, where they're supposed to send or pay their taxes, and where they send their kids to school.
One of the interesting findings of this is that, one of the endpoints of that straight line, that's, if you look at a map, it's a straight line, the border between Spotsia and Orange, is now about twenty-five feet of water somewhere in the bottom of Lake Ant. Nobody actually knows where, but it's there supposedly. Any of you are divers that want to go explore, maybe go find the endpoint of the county? All sorts of little things crop up, start peeling these things. Okay, any questions about the legislative priorities that we want to forward to our state delegation?
I think most of these are already included in the Virginia Association of Counties, where they're moving. This will just get it to our legislators.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Motion second, and more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, board comment?
Chairman, my comments actually covered in informational items, which audience wouldn't normally hear. So, I wanted to talk a little bit about some of the road improvements that are being done. I'm sure everyone's noticed, Route Three and Route Twenty were VDOTs doing work. The scope of work there is to realign and lengthen the turn lanes coming off Route Three onto Route Twenty and over the Seven-Eleven in the bank. They have a summer of twenty-nineteen completion date planned, very similar to the work that was done up here at the entrance to the lake, and they're also going to add the Opticon as part of the safety improvements, which Opticon, so that fire and rescue in their apparatus, they can change the lights to prevent accidents, as they're responding to something. So, just wanted to let people know that that was being done, and then there's been some backplates put on the lights at the different intersections, so that the sun doesn't totally obscure them, so you can see them much better and everything. And Alan Saunders, our resident administrator, has done a wonderful job and really moved a lot of projects forward in the county, and a very good book.
Yeah, I would, yesterday morning, as we were attending the Baco meeting, I had the pleasure of watching on the phone, Roger, being sworn into the board of Baco, which is the Board of the Association of Counties. So, congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hopefully, we can.
Or condolence.
I was gonna say, that's more appropriate, but hopefully, we get a little bit more done for Orange County with me being on here. So, we appreciate that.
I've got a couple.
Sure.
On Saturday, at the Orange County High School, there will be the robotics competition. If you've never seen any one of those, they are fascinating. Some really, really bright, young kids are up there building their own robots, designing them, programming them. It's an amazing thing to watch, and I'm glad I'm not competing with them, because they're some pretty bright kids. Second item is Dogwood Village has acquired some land next to their existing facilities, and they are considering entering into a contract to design a, how facilities would be located on that land, and.
For a master plan.
For a master plan for that. The existing health and rehab building is forty-five-plus years old, and it has been, it has been well-maintained over the years, put a lot of money into that, and upgrading it as well as just maintaining it, but it is still forty-five years old, and if we want to be able to serve the citizens of the county in terms of providing long-term care or health and rehab, we need to reconsider where we're going from there. So that's one of the things we're doing.
Okay. Any other comment? Any questions on the information items? All right. Any new appointments to boards, commissions, or committees? Okay. All right.
Parks and Rec Foundation Board of Directors, are these three folks, do they want to be reappointed, or where are we at on that?
I have not checked with Tim Newberry, but I will, and find out.
Okay.
For the EDA, does the town approve Ronnie going back home, or is it looking at someone else?
I haven't received an updated recommendation from them. I can reach out to Wendy and confirm.
Okay.
There's appointments required, the Community Services Board, which provides mental health and substance abuse and aging services throughout the county. We do have one member from Lake of the Woods on there, but that's an at-large, and I think if anybody's interested, I would recommend they apply, let me know. Same thing with the Skyline Community Action Program, that deals with housing issues. So, and both the Community Policy and Management Team and the Family Assessment and Planning Team is part of the Children's Services Act in terms of making decisions with regard to that. And one of the requirements of the law is to have a family member as a member of that team, and that's been one of the most difficult things to recruit. There's a whole bunch of other formerly required people from the court, from the county, from social services, from the Community Services Board, a whole range, but getting a family member has been very difficult. Do you know any situations or any families that might be using those services? Please let them know that they can serve on one of these committees.
Okay. Calendar. Let's see. I'm gonna attach the next, three-month look at the calendar. No scheduling of any public hearings at this point, I believe. Let's see, we are approaching the seven o'clock hour. We have scheduled a public comment at seven o'clock for anyone who would like to speak to us, present information to us in a brief fashion. Do you have anyone signed up at this point?
I do currently have one speaker signed up.
Okay.
I think anyone else with interactive, um, Susan can help them with that.
Okay. Okay, give her, give Susan your name and address, and why don't we, why don't we go ahead and do this, since everyone's gathered here? Who is your first person to sign up?
First person is John Bergeres, resident of Spotsylvania.
Okay.
My name's John Bergeres.
Come up to the, we're required to document all this.
I'm not good.
Oh, that's all right. None of us are.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we aren't either, definitely.
John Bergeres, I live in, just over the line in Spotsylvania, and I own Lake of the Woods Professional Center right down here, and I'd like to comment, I travel Route Three back and forth daily, and I'd like to comment on the traffic situation out here at the entrance. You've got the holidays coming up here, and you have massive gridlock out there. I've personally seen people backed up halfway to the post office trying to make a left-hand turn into here, and they pull up and they block the intersection so that the traffic going east on Route Three can't go anywhere. I've sat through a couple lights there, waiting. You've got road rage out there, you've got people flipping people off, you've got people horns, cursing, everything. This place is fifty years old, you've got a thousand houses in here, several thousand houses, you've got the same two-lane entrance that you had fifty years ago, and I don't know what your plans are. I followed the fifty-year plan that you guys spent a lot of time on, and I didn't see anything where you were trying to improve that and/or make a second entrance. But in the interim, I would suggest during the holiday period, when you have high-traffic flow, perhaps you could require Lake of the Woods security to put an individual out there to direct traffic and keep the lanes open so that you don't have somebody shooting somebody out there. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you.
Your next speaker is Danielle Chercola, three-zero-eight, Bertie Breth.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Chairman, and Board members, and residents of Lake of the Woods. I am Danielle Chercola, and I would like to address, or have you address for me, the topic of erosion and the role that the county plays in securing either help or solutions when there is tremendous erosion on a property in Orange County. And I would like to thank Mr. David and his team, because I spoke with Davis Smith, as well as his assistant, Thomas, and they were most accommodating and gave me some resources, but I would like to know if you either have a civil engineering firm that you would like to recommend, because my property has flooded so badly that I have a quarter, actually a third of my driveway has now washed away due to runoff, storm runoff, which we can't help, the storm runoff, but what we can help is the drainage. And the lot next to me, which is considered a buildable lot, but is about three-quarters of the way eroded away, there's very little land left on it, actually will be more detrimental to my home and property if somebody does build on it. And it has a stream on it that looked like a trickle when I purchased the home a year ago, and I watched it grow into the Amazon many times, and it grew to the point where it jumped my six-foot culvert and went up two feet above that to the base of my home. And so I've had damage into my home twice now, in June of this year, and then October eleventh. And I've taken this issue to the board, and they've been most understanding, and they're hoping to give us some solutions as a whole community. I'd like to see a show of hands of how many people in the room actually have had a neighbor where they themselves have suffered from some type of flooding, and as you see, they don't represent themselves very well here. So I feel like the Lake of the Woods spokesperson, because I've witnessed lots and lots of homes that have flooded, and it's overwhelming. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Close the public comment period. All right, and we will recess for meeting with the Lake of the Woods Board of Directors, and we've had a closed meeting session. We're going to close immediately after the dinner, is that the plan?
I guess. We can maybe squeeze about ten minutes real quick to close it down if you want.
Okay, let's go into close. Apparently, it's gonna be a short session, so why don't you?
Do it now?
Let's do it now.
Okay.
We will be late for dinner. Just a few minutes.
All right. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Orange County desires to discuss in closed meeting the following: Discussion and consideration of candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, and performance of specific employees of a public body; Discussion concerning the expansion of existing business or industry, when a previous announcement is made that the business or industry is interested in locating or expanding its facilities; and constitutional legal and counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring provisional legal advice concerning a zoning issue. Whereas pursuant to Sections 2.2, 37, 11a1, 85, and 88 of the Code of Virginia, such discussions may occur in closed meeting, now therefore be resolved if the Board of Supervisors of Orange County dishear by authorized discussion for state matters in closed meeting. Neither is motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.